Apartment building is part of the plans. So with this, there are a couple of different actions that we are looking at reviewing tonight. One of them is, a couple of them deal with our Shoreland ordinance. And I'll go to the next diagram here. Within the property, it's adjacent to the Vermillion River, which is shown up here towards the east. This is County Road 47. This is 31st Street. Within the 300-foot setback of the Vermillion River, there's Shoreland maintenance ordinance requirements that have certain regulations that affect this property. One of them is a requirement for a special use permit for any building over five units size. And there also is a limit of building height to 35 feet within this area. You can see that the 300-foot line crosses like this. It encompasses about half of the building, which falls within the site here. So we're looking at a special use permit and a variance for the Shoreland ordinance, as well as the site plan for the construction of the 60-unit building itself. So this is what the prop would look like here. You've got 31st Street, yeah, County Road 47 here. Would be a three-story building with an kind of angle in it. There would be parking on-site outside, as well as parking below the building as well. It would be a three-story building above at-grade parking, similar to the building they constructed across the street. This is what the building would look like here. It would be a combination of different materials on there. Vinyl lap siding, vinyl shake siding, architectural precast panels, glass, rock, face block, and brick. We do have architectural standards. They do meet the architectural standards in most places, albeit on the front elevation, they are slightly short of the 25% of the material combinations. However, they did add more materials to the other facades of the building of a higher quality, so we are acceptable to that modification. And so this plan, as we see it today, would be acceptable for us. As you can see, the apartment units would be located here. This would be the parking area at-grade, as you see it there. When we take a look at the special use permit for the multiple-family building, the Shoreland ordinance doesn't give us a lot of guidance in that, as far as what sort of requirements that we may place in particular on the special use permit. Special use permits are designed to allow for uses that, under certain conditions, may be acceptable in an area and allows the possibility for the Planning Commission Council to adopt specific conditions to allow it. In this circumstance, since the multiple-family building is allowable use within the R3 district, we're not adding any further requirements on to the special use permit, being that it meets the underlying zoning district. We did reach out to the Department of Natural Resources as well to get their opinion on the special use permit, and they had no comment on that. So we are moving forward with a recommendation of approval on that. When you take a look at the variance in the property here, under a variance request, we're looking at a couple of different items. We're taking a look at practical difficulties in complying with the code and how this property may be different from other properties in the city. In this circumstance here, the property as designed goes back to the early 1980s. The Shoreland management ordinance came across in about the mid to late 1990s. So the plan for this property predates the code that we have in place. The intent of the use of this property was to allow for this type of development, which would be a three- to four-story building, as you see here. Because of that situation, that's the unique circumstance, we are recommending approval of the variance based upon that. If we did not have it a three- or four-story building, we have approved 70-plus units on the property. Having it be of a lower, not a three- or four-story at 35 feet would spread the property throughout the development, throughout the property, and add for more, less green space and a more intensive development. So based upon those two reasons, we are recommending approval of the variance on the property here. This is what the other sides of the building look like here. I think that's all that I had. We do have representatives tonight for WAI Continuum, as well as the other development team involved with the project, that are here to answer any questions. With this, this is a public hearing. You can open it at this time, or I can stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will go ahead and open the public hearing. If you have any comments about this particular item, if you'd step up to the podium, state your name and address, and for the record, and make any comments you have. Anybody want to speak to this item?
I have a question.
Okay, I'm Mary Murphy, and I live across the road from this project. So I'm not against the project, but I cannot, we, there's four of us on our side of the street, who can't get onto 47 now. So my question is, how are we going to get, if it's a 60-unit building, there could be 90 vehicles coming out of that property? And I've talked to people on 47, and there's no plan right now for a stop sign anywhere from all the way down from General Seaborn. So that's my concern, is all that additional traffic coming on to that road. That's all I have to say.
All right. Thank you for your testimony. Any other comments? All right, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close public hearing. Commissioners.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Seaborn.
Is there, is parking allowed on 31st Street?
Commissioner, I don't believe it's restricted. I, I don't, I can't say for certain, but generally, parking is going to be allowed on roadways unless there is specific signs that prohibit it. And I don't recall that those are present on 31st Street.
So am I reading this right, that there's not enough parking spaces within the, on surface and underneath parking to accommodate two per unit? Did I, did I read that right?
No, actually, they have sufficient parking to meet the two spaces-per-unit requirement. Some of it would be surface parking, and some of it would be on the first floor of the building.
I had, I just got off the phone with some local residents, and they had the same comment. They just, they just have a hard time the way it is, and had concerns of the traffic control at the intersection.
John, what are our options for that intersection there? What control do we have over that?
As far as the Planning Commission and this plat goes, if you feel that traffic is a sufficient impediment to proving the development, you have the option of denying it based upon that. We do not have any plans for any modifications to the intersection. The intersection is proposed, or the, the increased traffic on 31st Street is anticipated. We have this development, as well as in the future, I think, three or four other similar types of apartment units that would be based on 31st Street between County Road 47 and where it bends more to the east there. And so we're anticipating that 31st Street to carry more traffic in the future, and that intersection to have more traffic in the future.
So do we have plans to address or change the controls there?
I don't believe there's any plans at this time, no.
But do, does the city have control of that intersection?
That would be a county intersection on that, because it's County Road 46, 47.
So the county commissioners, we'd have to convince to change the control there, not MDOT?
Correct. MDOT would have no bearing in that at all. There would have to be, you know, certain traffic qualifications in order for control to go in there, certain traffic numbers to be reached.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
On those same lines, I'm assuming there's a process that down the road, should there prove to be issues, that there can be a way to have an analysis done by the county on that intersection?
That's correct.
And how is that typically handled? Would a residence come to the city to get that done, or they have to go to the county? How is that typically a process handled?
Sure. Couple of different ways. The county will periodically look at intersections and do some analysis to see if they meet warrants for modifications on that. So the county may do that on their own. Residents, the city, they may petition the county to, hey, take a closer look at this one. We want to get a traffic count. We want to see if this intersection meets your warrants for modifications.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Um, because I, if I'm not, that path, there's a walking path that crosses 31st Street right there also. So there's pedestrian traffic that goes across 31st in an uncontrolled intersection also. I have another question, too, on the Shoreland overlay district. What was the purpose of that?
Purpose of that district is to protect wildlife areas, stormwater runoff, of areas within certain distances of rivers and lakes. So within Hastings, distances within 300 feet of rivers are included within that district, and I think 1,000 feet of lakes.
I'm sorry, I missed the last sentence.
Oh, 1,000 feet from lakes, 300 feet from rivers.
300 feet. So does it have anything to do with the, like, the height of buildings near it? Or I guess that, that was one of the first things I thought of, is that kind of to protect shoreline would be partially view?
Correct. Yep, I think that's the purpose behind having the 35-foot height limit within the Shoreland Management District.
And the proposed is 59, almost 60?
Correct.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Alba.
Is there any plans for the runoff from the parking lot there? Is that going to go into the stormwater? Is there going to be any type of a basin set up out there, or is it going to just naturally flow towards the Vermillion River?
Yeah, didn't, didn't put a good grading plan on the overhead here, but there is existing pond, stormwater pond within the site shown here. So this, again, this is County Road 47, the Vermillion River. There's the trail that goes down the Vermillion River here. Just to the west of that, there is an existing stormwater basin and outlet that was designed to handle this building here, albeit a larger building, as well as other stormwater in the area.
Okay. So it'll be set up to go right in there?
Correct.
Thank you. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Johnson.
And maybe you know, there's apartment complexes right adjacent to this, right?
Correct.
Do you know the height of those buildings? I'm just wondering how this is going to compare.
I believe the height is very similar to that. I'm looking over to Todd. Same height? Okay.
Could I ask you to step up, and so the people playing at home can hear as well?
Yep, I'm Todd Seaworth, owner. And I don't know if you can see on these elevations, but on the left side and the right side of the buildings, they do step down to a two-story height limit, so it does kind of detract from this height pitch to down to a lower pitch. So it's kind of a subtle decrease. And also, just to reiterate some of the comments here, which are valid, but back in 2002, just FYI, this whole development was platted, and it was platted for a 72-unit building and approved by the city. So, and we're now reducing it down to 60 units, but our parkland dedication fees, stormwater fees, were all paid based on 72 units. So I just want to make that clear, too, also, to the city, that there's some overcharges, you know, that we have paid, and now we're reducing it down to 60 units. And, and it's approved plat, so with 72 units, so that's, it's, in all honesty, in my, in my opinion, I should just be coming here with a building permit application and not being at a public hearing, but, so anyways.
Thanks.
Is it a 60 unit or a 66?
60.
Well, this says 66.
It is a 66 unit, but it is a 60-unit building.
And if I'm not mistaken, the materials are very similar, if not exactly the same, as the one across the street?
Very similar. There's a lot of similarities within the material. I think the one across the street had a, had a little more brick on it. This one has some other variety of materials on it.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Seaborn.
I guess I'd like to be proactive about the intersection. I don't want something to happen bad before there's a safety evaluation of the situation. I just feel like putting that to be sure that we're not having problems at the intersection with pedestrian, and, I mean, there's huge traffic on the road. I just think that the safety is important enough to, you know, make a motion to have, I'd like to make a motion to have that evaluated, at least so we know what we're dealing with there. I don't know quite how to put, how to put it into a motion.
Well, there are a number of conditions attached to any approval that we might have.
Sure.
What are our options as far as?
Well, again, I just, I just want to clarify, though, however, I mean, it is a platted parcel that's been approved for 72 units. So this has all been done with traffic analogies, and yes, I understand that it is getting busier, and I definitely agree with Mary Murphy, that there might be some traffic control issues that need to be addressed down the road. But I don't think that's part of my responsibility to the city and the traffic issues. I just want to continue with what was approved back in 2002 and move forward.
So, John, can you, can you tell us why? I get why the special use permit and the variance are here. Why is the site plan here again?
Site plan is here because we had the plat approved in 2002, as Todd stated, but we did not have the specific building plans before the Planning Commission Council. So he is correct that when the Riverwood 7th Development went through and subsequent the Riverwood 8th Development, we had a, we have approved along 31st Street a number of apartment units. So we anticipated a load greater than what is today upon 31st Street.
Mr. Chair. I think, I think what I'm also seeing is the land to the south is also medium density. Certainly likely that apartment building would probably go in there, too, maybe, or?
They've been approved for that, yes.
Okay. They've been approved for that. Can you elaborate?
Sure. Yep, we, the properties, this property's been constructed. This is the one that's proposed here. These two properties, as well as two or three other properties to the south of here, have all been approved in developments from, ranging, I think, from 2002 to 2008 for apartment buildings.
So they've been platted?
They've been platted. They've been platted, and the plats have been designated with a certain amount of maximum density that could be constructed in the property. So what we wanted to be able to do was to get an idea of what the load would be upon 31st Street, when we did that, when they approved those plats at that time, and then when the buildings would come forward for construction, to move forward with the site plan application, which we see tonight. This was a little bit unusual because of its close proximity to the Vermillion River. We have these variance and the Shoreland issues that we would not have on the other parcels.
So I assume there's no sunset that affects this plating? I mean, with nothing having been done for so many years, there's, there's, it's just a, it's a one-year?
With this one here, the, this is.
Yeah.
No, this plat's recorded.
Yeah, the plat, the plat's been recorded, the development agreement's been recorded, so we've granted approval to do this. And so that, that remains in effect.
You know, I think from, from my point of view, anyway, I know it's not ideal, right? The fact that we, we tend to not seem to be proactive with any of our road decisions when this type of thing happens, right? It's always, it's always the study of the traffic that actually occurs after the building happens, and I, it's, it's not an ideal situation. I don't know that I've ever seen a situation where we've been proactive before developments in traffic controls. It's always the other way.
Especially in a situation where it's not the city has control, it's the county. They're not going to look at it.
Right.
They're not going to look at it as, what is it going to be like five years from now or 10 years from now? They look at it, what is it today? Do we need to do something now?
Right. The difficulty that we have in these type of situations are, when you take a look across the entire county, there are many road intersections today that do not meet, that meet warrants for traffic modifications with the existing traffic. And so from the county's standpoint, they're going to be looking at those intersections to take priority over intersections which traffic may increase in the future.
Yep, right.
So that's the difficulty. Not, not an ideal situation, but unfortunately, when you take a look at measuring the needs, these type of situations fall lower than ones that are existing.
So in that, in that regard, I don't know that there's really much we can do.
Yeah.
That particular item.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Alba.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the special use permits, site plan, height variance for the Vermillion Shore Apartments Phase 2.
All right. Just to be clear, I have a motion on the table for approval of all three actions. The special use permit, the site plan for the 60-unit apartment building, and the variance to the 35-foot height for the Shoreland District.
That's correct.
Right.
Anybody wish to second that motion?
I would second that.
Commissioner Johnson seconds. Any final debate or comments before we take a vote? All right, seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favors of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
And Commissioners, this will move forward to the City Council coming up on August 20th for final action.
All right. Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is Greg J. Holmes' preliminary and final plat, 2017-27, South Pines 9.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Planning Commissioners. What we're looking at here is the next phase of the South Pines development, South Pines 9. This is County Road, or excuse me, State Road 316, Tuttle Drive, and Sandpiper Circle. As you can see, the development here would complete the loop for Sandpiper Circle that was anticipated upon the original development back around 2001. The plat itself would be for 25 single-family home lots. The single-family home lots would be similar to the previous addition, with lots located here and down here on Tuttle Drive. So tonight, we're asking for preliminary and final plat approval on this one, taking a look at the history of the site. Originally, this was developed as a twin-home subdivision. You can see upon the eastern side of Sandpiper Circle that these were developed as twin-home lots around the early 2000s. This area here highlighted was originally planned for 30 twin-home lots. They are coming back today with 25 single-family lots. So that, this departure leads us to go for a preliminary and a final plat approval on this one. Take a look at the property right now. It's pretty flat, pretty treeless. You can see it's been graded in for Sandpiper Circle and planned for the development that is shown today. Stormwater ponds exist here towards the southwest and here towards the northeast of the development. These were designed for a larger development and have been reviewed by our engineering department, and they are confident that they will be able to handle the stormwater runoff generated from this development here. This is what the lot layout of the property looks like. Property is zone R2. There's minimum size requirements for that district, which this meets, and so the, there's nothing further necessary for that. Public notification, we did mail out notification to all owners within 350 feet of the property. The Outlet A ponding basin down here would be the responsibility of the surrounding property owners, not the city, so we would need to ensure that a homeowners association or maintenance agreement established to ensure the long-term maintenance. We would handle that with a development agreement that would be drawn up upon approval of the plat here. From park dedication standpoint, park dedication for this development has been paid previously, so nothing is necessary at this time. We do have a collective sewer interceptor fees of about $12,125 that would be due upon the recording of the subdivision here. And so I think that's about all that I have for this subdivision. Greg Jablonski, Greg J. Holmes back there, if you have any questions for him. Again, this is a public hearing. I can stand for questions at this time. One clarification I did want to make here, because we have not had a plat, preliminary plat, final plat here in a while, is really what the difference between the two are. When you take a look at a preliminary plat, that is where a lot of the work goes through. That is where the grading plan, utility plan, all of the major engineering, civil engineering items are done. A final, and they're done in such a way so that they can be set up, so when the market is correct, you can immediately subdivide off lots in what's called a final plat. If, if one wants to go forward and do all at the same time, you have this combination come through with the preliminary and final plat. So sometimes you see them separate, sometimes you see them together. The misnomer of this is one would think a preliminary plat would be of a much more basic review. Actually, that's, that's the big review. The final plat is just ensuring that the, that the final plat layout is consistent with what the preliminary plat is. So with that, I can stand for any questions, or you can open the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will open the public hearing now. If you have any comments about this particular item, step to the podium, name and address, and... Welcome.
My name's John Gremlin. I live in the South Pines. We were here when Mr. Jablonski platted the first section he's building right now, which is on the opposite end of Sandpiper. And it was stated at that time that before he was to build his second phase, Sandpiper Circle would be completed through the Tuttle Drive to eliminate all the construction traffic going through the neighborhood. And I think that should be contingent on approval of this, that that road goes through first, before he turns over any ground over there, to move the traffic from the other end. And the other thing I have as a question is the retention pond on the upper right-hand corner there, which is my backyard, that there is enough room in there for all the runoff water from the other development into there. There are three 24-inch pipes coming into that pond right now, draining everything off of the other end of Sandpiper. And when we get the big rains, that pond comes up a lot. And it's supposed to deviate out to the south end, out to Tuttle Drive. It's a man-made little dike in there, and the overflow is supposed to go that way. So we're concerned about how much water we're going to get in there with all this addition up there, if he's going to have the stormwater run into that retention pond also.
Thank you for your testimony. Anyone else? Okay. All right, seeing no further comments, I'm going to close public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments?
I have a question.
Commissioner Seaborn.
Um, does notifying all the property owners within 350 feet of the site, does that include the full Sandpiper Association? Did every homeowner in the Sandpiper, did they all get notice?
I don't believe so. I don't think everyone within Sandpiper Circle was within 350 feet.
Okay. Because, of course, we have an association there. So it's kind of like they're all kind of one. Um, does notifying all the property owners within 350 feet of the site, does that include the full Sandpiper Association? Did every homeowner in the Sandpiper, did they all get notice?
I don't believe so. I don't think everyone within Sandpiper Circle was within 350 feet.
Okay. Because of course, we have an association there. So it's kind of like they're all kind of one. So I feel like that's, you know, may have been a, an oversight that, that needs to be known to all members. And part of the reason why I think that is because, you know, who's the president of the association? They, do they know? Were they, you know, notified? Because I'm seeing in here some, some association requirements of the development, you know, as proposed here. And I'm just wondering if it's been evaluated, or if I can get some more information on what is expected of the current association in comparison to what's going to be required of this association, and where things stop and start for the different associations to, to deal with and take on.
Sure, I could provide some, a little bit of background on that. The homeowners association, what we are looking at from the city's standpoint is any time there is any joint or public facilities, joint facilities mostly, that would be required to have, be maintained by multiple owners, we want to have a mechanism, a homeowners association to do that. So in this situation, when you take a look at South Pines Eight and the proposal for South Pines Nine, the, the only things that would come under that realm would be the stormwater ponds themselves, the one at Outlet Eight of the southwest, and the one towards the, the northeast there. Now, both of those, those ponds exist. I believe they're both have requirements for maintenance under existing homeowners associations. So it would be the responsibility of the developer to ensure that, that the, that these ponds continue to be maintained, and it provides an opportunity to have the new homeowners here, the 25 new homeowners, participate in helping to defray the cost of that facility against the existing homeowners that have that responsibility.
Okay, so does, does the current Sandpiper Development slash Association, are they responsible for smoke, snow removal on Sandpiper, or is that city?
That's a public road.
That's a city, okay.
Mm-hmm.
So I was, um, last meeting, I tried to say this, and I got distracted, and I apologize for that. But my, my point with evaluating associations, I always want everybody to realize that it may not always be an association. It's a choice of the owners of whether or not they continue an association or not.
Yes and no. You, you're correct in the standpoint that yes, i-if it's a private association, an association may choose to modify or may choose not to continue. However, the requirements that we place on homeowners associations are a little bit different. We require that if there's any entities that are under joint control, that they continue, that they're, that they're financed, and there's a few other clauses within there. So we want to ensure that there's, if there's anything in there that has a, a facility that is maintained by multiple property owners, that they have a mechanism to pay for that over time, and a way to collect those funds over time.
Okay. So does that need to be established here?
It would be established in our development agreement. So with, when we, when we do the final plat approval there, we have requirements for the plat itself in, in more detail. One of those is, is within the development agreement, talks about those homeowners association requirements.
Okay.
And it is a condition of the approval here.
Yeah, that's why I bring it up, is because I just didn't understand by this brief sentence what that means if there is no longer an association.
Mr. Jablonski, do you have a comment?
Dealing with that retention pond that we're talking about back there, our association manages the maintenance on that pond. The only thing the city does is clean out the intake pipes where it comes. And they've come out when we've called them, we've only called them twice, I think, in 14 years. They come out and just clean these areas, and they have. So we take care of everything around that, right up to the line. So I just, you know, and if they're going to start running more stormwater in there, there should be some subsidy someplace, or some responsibility on the other side. Because we don't know from our side if Mr. Jablonski is going to have a homeowner association there or not, or if it's going to be just straight, single-family dwellings, and everybody takes care of their own. But we still have the stormwater issue coming in there. And one other question, I mean answer, everybody on my side of the street was not informed of this meeting. I myself and the president of the association, and I was not informed of it. My neighbor told me about it. So I don't know how your mailing went out, but I never got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Alpa.
Did we, did we close the public hearing?
We did.
Okay, I couldn't remember. Just in, in comments to the, remarks to the comments on the road there, I do remember when we did number eight, and there was a lot of comments on that road, and making sure that it would go through, so all that traffic didn't have to go through the development there. And I was driving through there one day just to look at the progress back there, and was surprised to see that it didn't go through. Now, I'm assuming that as they develop this, that's got to be one of the first things that gets done, is that roadbed put in to ensure that no traffic has to go all the way around the other side of Sandpiper, because that's a lot of traffic that would have to go through there, a lot of construction traffic, and really for no reason. Do we know what the timing of that would be as far as development on that road?
Sure. Mr. Jablonski, could he address that question?
Could you just step up and say that in the mic? And then, I got a question for you too, while you're up there, so.
Good evening, Nick Jablonski.
Yeah, in construction of a development like this, the road would be the first thing to be done. Utilities and storm, and then the street. That would be before we could have any houses really being built, so.
So there should be no reason for any construction traffic to go the other route through the, through the development?
No, they'll start at the, they'll start at the main road being Tuttle Drive and work their way up.
Okay, thank you.
Could you, could you talk just to the, the comment about the, the stormwater runoff or the ponding basin that's in the, that one area?
All that I know about that is that these ponds were designed to handle this entire development right from the get-go. And they've evaluated that. It's been through with our engineers and the city engineers. I, I don't have the experience to do the numbers, but it's been evaluated.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, speaking on the, the runoff points, I guess I'm not an engineer, but twin homes, larger roofs, wider driveways would create more runoff. I would actually think single-family homes, there'd be more porous green space that would absorb runoff, so I would, I would think that there would actually be less runoff building single-family homes versus twin homes.
Mr. Johnson.
I think also what I'm seeing too, related to that runoff, Outlet A is going to be a new ponding basin, an additional one.
I think that exists at present, Nick?
It's there, but...
It does, and it was, it was put in in the initial stages of this whole development.
Perfect. But it's really not taking water, because the roofs aren't in place.
Yeah, it's not taking as much water as it will, but it was, it was designed and put in for the whole development.
Right, right. Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So John, at this point, has engineering looked at this part of it?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, they, we, there are certain requirements that they have for stormwater runoff, information that the developer's engineer shares with our city engineer, taking a look at all the impervious surface, the grades, the volume control measures within the pond itself, anticipated rate flows during different stormwater periods, a wide variety of things. So those are, those have been initially reviewed by our engineering department. They don't, they've stated that they don't have any issues. They're going through their final analysis of that. So we did condition the plat upon the final conclusion of that, but we do not anticipate any issues with that, considering that this development is, has less impervious surface and less homes than what was originally planned.
So what, what expense does that association have to maintain that pond?
Good question. I'm not sure exactly what the expense would be to do that, but it, it is the responsibility of the association.
Which association?
The association that has the responsibility of it, I think the South Pines Eighth Edition had part of the responsibility. I'm assuming the Twin Home Association, whatever that's called, has responsibility over that pond, but those are delineated.
John, do we know what the, it says that we meet the size and setback requirements of the district, and the minimum lot size is 7,000 square feet.
Mm-hmm.
And, and it's hard to tell from the drawing, but what are the, like, what, which lot is the smallest here, and how big is it? And, you know, what's their average size?
Sure, sure. I mean, taking a look at it, I mean, there are some lots there that are right at 7,000 square feet on that one. If you, if you take a look at the ones that are kind of towards the center of Sandpiper Circle on diagonal, where it gets a little bit short back to the property lines, those are at 7,000, and then they increase from there, you know, up over 10.
Are the ho, do we know if the houses are going to be similar, or at least consistent with the last subdivision that was built?
Sure.
Since they were single-family as well?
Someone from the development team address that?
Yeah, I can address that. We plan to build similar identical type units as to what was built in the Eighth, so it would be consistent.
Yeah, so there's no big change going from one to the other?
No.
Mr. Chair. Yeah. Commissioner Martin?
Like to make a motion.
All right.
Like to motion that we approve preliminary and final plat number 2017-27, South Pines Nine, as noted, respecting the conditions laid out in the staff report.
All right, there's a motion for approval on the table for both the preliminary and final plat. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Alpa, seconds. Any final comments or questions before a call of vote?
Can I, I'd like to ask a question. What, what is anticipated as a commonly-held amenity within the subdivision? What, what amenities are, is being proposed that are going to be part of the association?
Sure. From the city's standpoint, our only concern is the stormwater ponds.
Okay.
All right, anything else? All right, all those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Hinsman, what's next for this?
With this one, we will be going to City Council on August 20th for final action.
All right, other actions, we have a variance in Original Hastings Design Standard Review, 2018-41, for Robert Wright.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, planning commissioners. We're looking at 414 West Fifth Street on the drawing here, Fifth Street down here, and the property was constructed in 1930. It's a 1,400-square-foot house. As you can see here, it has a detached garage in the rear of the property of about 370 square feet. The existing detached garage is located right on the property line. What the applicant wishes to do is to remove the garage and to build a new garage at the same location. This new garage would be 1,000 square feet, and he would like to place it in the existing location, which is on the property line. Within the R2 zoning district, we do have a five-foot minimum setback requirement for accessory buildings from property lines, and so the applicant is asking for a variance to that provision tonight. Along with this, we also have an Original Hastings Design Standards Review of the property, of the garage itself, again, under OHDS. These are requirements in older portions of the city of Hastings. They're not necessarily requirements that are looking at specific fidelity to a, a specific style, but more overall, how does it fit within the neighborhood as far as some of the traditional housing aspects and sizes of the facilities themselves. And so I'll, I'll go through a couple of those things here as we move forward. So this is the plan for the development here. You can see the existing house, the existing garage here, which is 18 feet wide, 20 and a half feet deep, and then the new garage, which would be 25 feet wide and 40 feet deep, or 1,000 square feet. You can see the property is, would, or the garage would be located right on the property line, as you see here. Building would look like this. It's a nice-looking building itself. The building meets our requirements under the, under the zoning code, and when you take a look at the Original Hastings Design Standards, the guidance that they give on this property is that you take a look at what's in the neighborhood, and when you take a look at the existing garages there, there is an existing 1,000-square-foot garage in close proximity to this property, so it's, it's not the largest one on the street. It would be a little bit higher than what the average garage would be in the neighborhood, but not out of bounds from what we have seen already, so we would support that. The garage would have four-inch vinyl siding, so it would have a smaller lap siding, consistent with some of the traditional elements of the neighborhood, which is great. The garage here already exists coming off of Fourth Street. We do have language within the OHDS that if there is an existing alley, which is present here, that it would come off the alley. But since this already has an existing driveway, the neighbor has an existing driveway, we've set precedence in the past that existing driveways can be used on rebuilds of garages, so we would support that as we move forward. So on the OHDS requirements, we are recommending approval of what you see here. On the variance, we are not recommending approval on that one. When you take a look at the requirements that we have established for granting a variance, which have stipulated within the packet itself, staff does not feel that those have been met in this situation. When you take a look at variances, essentially, you're taking a look at what type of, what type of barrier do you have in meeting the requirements themselves? And in this situation here, the garage could be moved over an additional five feet. I know the applicant has stated that moving it over an additional five feet is going to take up further area of his backyard, and that's not something that, that he would like to have occur. And so he's seeking the variance to preserve as much of the backyard as possible. When we take a look at the property itself, it's a 66-by-140 property, similar to most every property within the Original Hastings area. The, the property is, is pretty flat, albeit it does drop off the eastern 10 feet, so it's a little bit narrower than some of the other properties from a practical standpoint. But we feel that the property, the garage, could be moved, moved over five feet and meet the requirements of that, or the garage could be reduced in some way to limit that impact. So we do have the applicant, Bob Wright, present tonight. He may want to say a few more things related to his rationale for the variance on that one. Again, we are recommending denial of that, approval of the OHDS item, and I can stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners. Mr. Chair.
The 1,000-square-foot garage in close proximity, was that approved recently, or what's the story behind that?
Yeah, you take a look, it's over here. I think that was within the...
It's coming from the alley.
1,300 square feet? Okay. Yeah, I, it, it looks fairly new. I, I don't know when that was constructed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Alpa.
Do we have any idea what the age of the current garage is? And whether there...
Bob, do you know what the age of that is? Do you want to come on up here? Bob, do you know what the age of that, do you wanna come on up here?
I'm assuming it was built after the house.
Yeah, I'm not sure, uh, when it was actually built, but the condition it is right now, um, it's just, it's kinda falling apart. Um, it's not insulated or anything, and it's one of those that, um, the materials and stuff, that the actual, there was a lower ceiling in there, and some of those rafters were cracked, and I had to double them up and everything to make it safe to use it, so. Um, and as, at this point, it doesn't fit any cars really. Um, my girlfriend has a compact car, a Ford Focus hatchback, and it doesn't fit in there lengthwise. So, it's just not really a, a usable space. But I do have some pictures here as far as, I laid out some lines on the property to show where everything would be moving with the setback. I don't know, I guess, and how everything would line up. You can see, the, this would be with the setback, the, the, I guess that's the, you know, the orange, and then is the pink was, is where I would like to put it. The, the new garage itself is gonna be pulled so much forward and, and back in the property that there will be only roughly six and a half feet from the house to the new garage. And with the, the five-foot property setback pushing it over, there'll be roughly nine feet of the garage directly behind the house. With only six and a half feet there, that's not, I don't think you could get a car in and out of there every day. There, that's seven feet of the garage door that you wouldn't be able to use. And I guess reasoning behind building the, the new garage is, uh, I recently became a business owner, and I'm moving the business to my house. I, I have three, I'm in need of space for three vehicles plus, uh, business equipment, um, and it needs to be inside to be able to get heated. I looked all around town as far as any rental space or even properties to move into, and I couldn't, and there was nothing that I could find at the time. So this was one of my, basically my last option. I don't know, there's, there's a couple pictures on there with, with measurements as far as, there's the one, I think it says twenty-four feet. That would be from, from the fence on, um, the east side of the property to the garage with the setback. I'd only have a twenty-four foot wide yard then, going back, and that's, I mean, that's a, a disadvantage, I guess, of have, you know, having a small yard there, but the big thing was that I wouldn't be able to get into the garage if I have to move it over the five feet.
Mister Chair.
Commissioner Seawell.
Um, did I hear you say that the height is more than, higher than others in the area? Did I hear you say that, John? Wow, just made it up, huh? I didn't see anything, so I'm like, okay, what'd I hear?
Mister Chair, do you know what the, uh, width from the property line to the, uh, side of the house is?
From...
Across the driveway from the, from the property line to the house?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but there's, there's the driveway width, and then there's maybe six feet of grass between where like the house is and, and the driveway currently. When, when you get to the back of the house, it, uh, it widens out to match the garage, kind of. On my picture, I didn't show how it, it widens out right when you get to the house. It, it widens out there, but that's it.
Mister Chair.
Mister Johnson.
Um, kind of a similar question. So we got six feet from the house to the driveway. So I'm wondering what, what the dimension from the house to the property line is going east.
From the house to...
To west.
To the property line going west, that's, it's gotta be, well, it's two, at, at least two cars wide there.
Looking at the diagram there, it looks like he's got a twenty-five foot width garage that, in the house, looks to be just a little bit...
Doesn't quite.
It should line up the, the corner of the new garage with the corner of the house going straight back, yep.
Be a straight line. It's not drawn this way, though.
No, my, my picture was a little bit off, and...
So you're thinking it's roughly twenty-five feet from the house to the property line?
Roughly, yes.
So with that in mind, if you moved it over five feet, how would it be nine feet behind the house?
Because of where it sits, I can, I don't know if I can, I don't have the pictures to look at, but, uh, the current garage, I'm exp- I'm planning to expand it, the, the width of where the gate is, to make it even with that fence line that goes, I mean, it'll, I guess it'll be, it goes, no, with the new garage, it'll be roughly only three, four feet, roughly four feet behind the house. So that gives, with the, the new plans, there's three feet on either side of the new garage door, and so three feet plus maybe a few inches of the garage door will be behind the house.
You're putting a sixteen-foot door on there?
Eighteen.
Eighteen foot wide?
Yep.
So you could, even with five feet offset, you could still get that full eighteen-foot door in there without having to worry about going behind the house to get in there?
No, it, it would be behind, it would be behind the house. My picture doesn't show it the greatest. I di- I, I'm not the greatest artist, I tried to do it, but, uh, my measurements on the, on the pictures from, that I showed you, um, there's two measurements that are kinda up by the fence, and the one is the nine-foot measurement to the corner of the house, and then there's the one that's the, the four foot or just under four feet.
I'd just like to make a observation.
Go ahead.
Um, you know, when I look at his lot and the lots next to him on either side, you know, it's, it's, he would be continuing from that lot line into his backyard, and the next-door neighbor's garage is like right there also. It's probably, it's probably, you know, a little, it's got more of a setback from the picture that I'm looking at. But then the next door, the other guy on the other side, I mean, he's, he's got, he's taken up his whole lot with house, and then he's got his smaller, his smaller garage, a little bit bigger than this one, but a smaller garage, but the space that he's taken up, um, is, you know, you got, you got buildings on either side of you that are on top of you, you know, already. So I, I feel like with what he's proposing to do, he's, he's not any different than his two neighbors with, with his footprint that he's taking up on his lot.
Mister Chair.
Mister Alpa.
Couple of things, um, that trouble me. If that thing is sitting right on the lot line, uh, doing maintenance on that side of the garage could be problematic. I mean, if you have a great neighbor, not a big deal. If you have a, a neighbor you don't get along with, it could be a real problem. Second of all, uh, do you know exactly where that property line is? Do we know where the stakes are?
I do not.
Uh, that's the other thing that concerns me, is how do we know we're even on that lot line? How do we know that we're not over that lot line? Um, anytime I do any kind of work that, uh, where I'm buttoned up to the property line, I always get my site resurveyed to make sure that, uh, I'm not doing anything that would, uh, upset my neighbors and, um, I don't know, it's a good practice to know where those lot lines are.
I guess for my part to make a comment, um, uh, I, I'll be voting against the variance. I, I have no doubt that there are some things that you wish were different with your lot, uh, but I can't control that. Um, the variance is there for a number of reasons. Commissioner Alpa pointed out a, a couple. Uh, but I think there are configurations, and it's not my job to figure those out for you, but I, I do think there are configurations that would work for you.
Okay.
They may not be the ideal that you want, um, but there are configurations that I think could work, uh, and still meet that five-foot setback variance.
Okay. I just don't see it because of the fact that ha- you know, the seven feet of the garage door will be behind the gra- behind the house, and there's only gonna be the six and a half feet wide there.
Doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be forty feet deep.
I nee- uh, but that's the space that I need.
And that's, that's unfortunate. I, I understand that, right? I mean, it's a, it's a...
Yep. All I'm trying to do is improve this so that I have the proper space, uh, so that I can store my equipment.
Yeah, and I get that.
I've got a comment. I mean, like, the neighbor, he's, he's right on that line.
Neighbor at four twenty on the corner?
Uh, four oh eight, actually, I'm looking at. It appears like his garage is right on the line.
Well, I, I looked at the picture too, the, the neighbor at four twenty on the corner. His drive, or his garage is up against the alley, and it looks like it's over the property line.
And I, you know, and I have a barn on my property that's over the property line, but it was built in eighteen ninety-three.
That garage is newer than, than, I mean, it's gotta be within the last twenty years.
Yeah, and, and that is, is too bad, right? I mean, at some point, somebody obviously didn't even get a building permit, or they, they got the variance, um, for whatever reason. But you know, I, I guess one of the things that I, I, I think we as a body need to do better is make sure that, you know, we really are following the rules that we've established in our, our planning ordinances, and, uh, you know, I think there has to be an extraordinary reason to issue those variances, and I, I just don't see it with this particular one.
Okay.
But every, every commissioner can make up their own mind, so.
Mister Chair.
Mister Johnson.
Um, I just have, and I can't, you can't completely picture all of this, and I, you got great pictures in here, but it's, it's like two-dimensional and three-dimensional. Um, but, um, is there, what if we, while I'm suggesting maybe you could have a variance on the, on the variance, so what if you went to two feet off the line? You know, one of, one of two things, you'd have to really identify where are your lines?
Yep.
Find your, find your lot irons, um, and maybe, I mean, I would be, uh, you know, willing to live with a couple feet or three feet, but I think no feet is really tough.
And I, and I don't know where the current property line is by looking at the picture there. It looks to be that it's in the middle of the grass section in between the two houses, so it looks to be that I am maybe two feet off already, but I, I do not know that myself.
Right, right. And so I, I don't know if we're gonna get anywhere here tonight, but I would suggest that you find those lot irons and verify some of these things, and maybe come back with, with a, a s- a suggestion of, of a couple feet off. You know, i- i- or maybe you're already five feet off, you don't even know that.
I, I don't know, and I, I mean, I'm just looking to put it in the existing position.
In the exact same spot, right, right.
Just the, I guess the wall on the west, I would like to keep in the same spot, just for the fact that we line up with the driveway, um, and all that fun stuff, so.
Right, right. Um, yeah, I see where you're going with that. Um, I think it would be good, it's, it's hard to swallow that, leaving it right on the line, and we don't even know where the line is. Um, and I don't know, do we know anything about survey, lot surveys and adjacent lot or lot irons? Is he gonna end up hiring, uh, somebody to locate these things? Does the city locate them?
Uh, the city doesn't locate them, but we typically do in these situations are, part of the reason we have a five-foot setback requirement is that, uh, we have a better buffer to, to, to make a determination as to where exactly that, the property line is, uh, with the garage going on. And so, we wouldn't have a requirement for a garage to get a survey. There's certainly a suggestion made that that's a good idea to do, but that's part of where that five-foot comes in there, so it gives us a little bit of air
Fudge factor.
in, in case it isn't, and the property owner chooses not to get a survey.
Correct, correct. Um, I don't live too far from here, and I found three of my four lot irons.
Okay.
Uh, you could run a metal detector and go fishing, um, they might be there.
Okay.
Uh, that might tell us a little bit more about what we're seeing, and at least for me, I, I would, I would be, I would, I'd be really willing to, uh, do a variance on the variance. I think five foot is asking an awful lot in, in a situation like this.
Well, I, I've got a comment. You know, and I also know that there's lots in that older part of the city that aren't anywhere, anything like you think. I mean, and, and there's also been history of confusion between the markers from before and markers since then, um, where it's like, what do you, what do you go by? Because they're not even, they don't, they're not together. Um, so I don't know, I mean, maybe there's, I don't know what's going on in this particular block here, but you're, you're pretty, you're in the older part where you certainly could have some things that aren't clear.
Mister Chair.
Mister Alpa.
Uh, I guess I would have to kinda, um, make comments on those two and, and agree with that, that we need to have some, uh, better ideas of what we're looking at here, if we knew exactly how much space you have. This drawing is good, but we're missing a lot of dimensions that could really help us understand, um, what we're really dealing with there. Are we dealing, uh, with no feet, two feet, whatever it is, and, and it just seems a little too vague for me as well, so. Better, better, uh, dimensions in some of these would help too.
Well, and I mean, from my point of view, when you've got a structure, you, you're able to maintain that structure in its current position, and you're still dealing with neighbors and maintenance on that side of the, of the building. So I, to me, you know, it's rather, I mean, I, 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 I don't, uh, I, it's rather safe to assume that you can maintain what you've already got, and it's on the line, or it's in the ballpark of the line, so, um, you know, I, I don't really have a problem with it being on the line and maintaining what's there, um, because he could add on to what's there and still be on the lot line and not have a variance to deal with. You know what I mean?
I don't know if that's true or not, is it, John? Uh, it would be true. A situation here, I think, is, as the applicant pointed out, is the garage is not in the condition to be expanded.
Mister Martin.
Director Hensman, is it possible, um, instead of a motion to deny tonight, that we make a motion to table the variance to allow the applicant some time to come back to us with the measurements that we're laying out versus straight-up denial?
That, that's an option, and I may ask the question of the applicant on that too, 'cause I know that he's eager to have a decision on this one way or the other so that he can proceed with his project, so, Bob, from your standpoint, wh- what are your, what are your thoughts on, uh, on bringing this back in, in two weeks? So that'd be the tw- the twenty-seventh with some more detailed plans, and then the final decision of that would be until September third or fourth council.
I can make it work, I mean, it's what I gotta do, so.
Okay.
I was trying to get this done before winter, but that's fine, it's, it's, I gotta do what I gotta do to make this work, so.
And, and I appreciate that, and I, I second Commissioner Johnson's points. Um, I, I appreciate you investing, wanting to invest in your property and being a business owner, um, having family members that own businesses, I know the, the struggle...
having family members that own businesses. I know the, the struggles of, of having equipment, needing a place for it, keeping it out of the elements, things like that. Um, I think we, we've raised some good points here, and, and I think, um, with a little more information, we could make a, a sound decision at that point, once we have that information in front of us.
Do I hear a motion in there?
Sure. I'll make a motion that we table the variance in front of us. Uh, four fourteen Fifth Street West, pending a site survey with drawings laying out amended plans.
There's a motion on the table to, or, yeah, motion on the table to table. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Johnson, seconds. And if I remember my Roberts Rules or Orders, that's a non-debatable motion.
Correct.
And so, uh, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of, uh, tabling until our next meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Opposed, nay.
Motion passes.
Okay. And so we will bring this back on August twenty-seventh.
All right. Other business?
Other business. Uh, provide a recap of some of the, the council items that we had in August sixth. We had the original Hastings Design Standards Review for, uh, six fourteen West Fifth Street was approved by the council, as well as the, um, the site plan for the parking ramp at First National Bank. The Wallen Eighteenth Edition plans that we saw here, there has been a modification proposed by the developers to have the Villa Homes only within Brandlewood Court, and that the eight lots that fronted General Seaband Drive be completely removed from the development. So that, that plan is being brought forward, will be brought forward back to the Planning Commission coming up on the twenty-seventh meeting. Prior to that, I believe, on August twenty-third, Thursday night at seven P M., the developers are gonna be having a neighborhood meeting on that as well, so there'll be more information on that going out. So coming up on the twenty-seventh, we'll have that item for Wallen Eighteenth Edition with the fourteen units in Brandlewood Court, as well as this variance, uh, and those two items for sure coming forward in that meeting, and that's all I had at this time.
All right, thank you. Uh, commissioners, any other?
I got a, I got a question. Um, update on the, on the funeral homes? I understand there was a merger. I don't think that was on the table when we were here. And so there is no parking lot. What has changed with that?
Sure, sure. Yeah, that was a little bit of a strange thing that occurred there. As soon as we approved the site plan for, uh, the Wise Funeral Home, and they started construction on it, the, they merged. So the Wise Funeral Home on Spring and Fourth Street, my understanding is that'll not be used as a funeral home in the future. They've converted the area that they were grading out for a parking lot, they've, they've, uh, ceded or sotted that over, so that will not be a parking lot at this point. The property is owned residential, so the uses on that are, are quite limited. And so I haven't heard anything as far as what may occur on that in the future, other than they're not looking to use that as a funeral home.
Nor a crematory.
Right, correct, yeah.
Well, it looks like they did do the addition on the north side.
They did. They were in the, ironically, they were in the middle of that addition when the merger came forward, so they were gonna have the, the crematory unit in there, which, uh, uh, he ended up selling to another party, so there's no crematory unit within there. It's just kind of a, a larger garage now.
Okay, okay. Interesting. Thank you. Is there any update on any of the other facilities, like Target or anything, uh, so far that we're?
Yeah, Target, no, no news there. Uh, we haven't heard any, anything new on that, on that property, no. Uh, we have property in the industrial park right now, the, the, uh, the Westview Package building across from Cranky Ave. We've had some, some recent inquiries on that, albeit we don't own the property, but it's a large vacant property. Uh, we, we did hear back from the old Hudson Intech Building on Tenth Street. That's about a hundred and twenty thousand square foot building, that that's been completely leased up. Uh, an entity purchased that building. He's, uh, leasing area off on the inside for various, uh, uses, and that, that's been completely full now. So that, that's good news on that end of things. And then, uh, we hope that we may have, coming up in September, uh, our, one of their meetings in September, have plans come forward, uh, for the, the property just between Walgreens and, uh, just south of Walgreens there. So they're, we're working on that as we speak, so hopefully that'll be ready to go for the September meeting.
There's some interest in that, uh, lot just north of the, uh, graphic arts building down there? The, uh, art space?
Oh, yes, that one. Yeah, uh, north of the art space building, we own that property. Uh, we've had a, a sitery that's been looking at that. We've asked them to come back with a formal offer on that, uh, by early September, so we're waiting for that to come back in, and hopefully have some movement on that. We had a, uh, application that we, we had funded for grant funds to do environmental studies on that property. Ironically, when we cleaned up all the dirty stuff twenty years ago, we cleaned it up to the, the, uh, standards of nineteen ninety-seven and not the standards of twenty eighteen. And so some of the items that were left on there need to be removed, so we need to determine where exactly they are and how much needs to be removed. So you'll see people working out there within the next couple of weeks, if the drillers will be out there, and we hope to have everything in so that we can apply for cleanup grant funds and get that thing rolling hopefully next year.
Great, thank you.
All right. Anything else?
Yeah, I've got a, have you heard anything about, um, some of the, uh, what is it, Hastings Prescott Art Council people having plans for that north space?
Yep, yep, I've, I've, uh, talked a little bit with them on that, correct.
Also, I was, I'm curious about that, those people saying that they're right next to, they're within three hundred and fifty feet of that Sandpiper deal, and they didn't get notification. I, 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 I don't, I mean, I'm just curious, I, why would, why that wouldn't happen? I mean, did, was he, I, I guess, is there something that we can do to try to avoid that in the future?
Yeah, I guess I don't know if, if it was a situation in which they were within three hundred and fifty feet. Uh, the mapping program and the, the database that we have is, is pretty accurate on that, so there could be an error. But, uh, oftentimes, it's not uncommon for folks that are beyond three hundred and fifty feet have an interest in a project and, uh, and, and attend a meeting.
Yeah, and a situation like that too, I think it's important because it's, it is an association that, I mean, do you ever, like, notify the association themselves when they're, when they butt up to
We haven't.
That type of a proposal?
I mean, the association, if they have common land, then the association should be notified on that one. But, uh, I don't know what the ownership situation of, of anything like that is. It might still retain with the developer at that point.
Okay. And then this, this is kind of a side note to that same gentleman that spoke. He had talked about, um, the, uh, the, um, she would've lost my train of thought. Um, something I was gonna say. Oh, the traffic, the construction traffic. It sounded like something was to have taken place and it hadn't. Um, is that something that gets paid attention to, or why would that, something like that be such an oversight?
Well, the, uh, the Sandpiper Circle was supposed to be completed prior, I mean, sooner than it has been today. We've been work, I mean, noted from the application, there was a twenty seventeen application. We've been going back and forth on stormwater regulations with the developer for over a year on this one. So it's, it's taken longer than we anticipated.
Okay, so traffic, construction traffic has been happening that was not ever supposed to have been happening?
I remember, I remember the discussion we had during South Pines eight on that one, and I remember we talked about, you know, could, could the developer take the construction traffic up the unfinished portion of Sandpiper and use that? And apparently that didn't occur. So, uh, in this situation, we would have a requirement that there's not gonna be any home construction until Sandpiper Circle is completed, because it's all one road, and it's not phased out, where the last time, we were basically adding a little chunk to the end of it, which means everyone had to go up and around Sandpiper to get to that point. So with the, that, this should alleviate that in the future here, because the whole road will be complete prior to any permits being pulled.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Just a reminder to exercise your right to vote tomorrow.
Yoohoo, do it, do it.
All right, uh, motion to adjourn. So moved. Uh, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.
Both the buildings are gonna function as funeral homes until the new ones opens in December, um, but Michael and Mary still...